All right, here we go, everybody. Welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, September 19th, 2022. Teresa, the role, please.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Monacino.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember Roy.
Here.
Councilmember Sova.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
Here, all present and accounted for. An executive session will be held for the purpose of council discussion consultation direction to and legal advice from town attorney pursuant to Arizona revised statute thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three. Prince A, Prince Three, and Prince Four regarding Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Intergovernmental Agreement. Second item is council discussion consultation direction to and legal advice from town attorney pursuant to Arizona revised statute thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three Prince A, Prince Three, and Prince Four regarding Desert Hills Standpipe. And the third item is council discussion and evaluation of the town manager's performance pursuant to Arizona revised statute thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three Prince A and Prince One. Do we have a motion to move into E session?
So moved.
Second.
All right, now, in favor.
Hi.
Catherine, you might find this interesting.
Welcome, everyone, to the, what did I say, the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, September 19th, 2022. And we're going to hear more from this man later, but Dr. Monroe, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Thank you, sir. Public announcements, I'll be real happy someday when the local news media figures out that Fortieth Street and Ashley Hill Hills is nowhere near Cave Creek and Carefree, Iowa. Have threatened to send them maps of our of our political boundaries, so they know whenever they report things, they can actually be accurate. But apparently, that's not a big important thing for the news media. Smile, Mr. Sims. I have nothing else, other than to say that we're moving away from the from the monsoon season. The weeds that have grown that we've got are going to dry out, so we want to be very careful with activities around. But we don't have of May, March of, or May of 2020, 2020 would not be good. Call to the public.
Bob Hasselgasser.
Bob Hasselgasser. Well, now we can actually hear you. Hi, folks, how are you? Happy Monday. Anyway, Bob Hasselgasser, City Sun Times, a Northeast Valley newspaper. We covered the area from By Canyon City down to Camelback, east of I-17 to Pima, DC Ranch, Fountain Hills, including Anthem. We play a major role in bringing folks up here to spend their money and have fun in Cave Creek, so there you go. Now, I'm here tonight on behalf of the twenty things we love about Cave Creek. Everybody loves Cave Creek, right? Unfortunately, not all the local businesses are supportive of our efforts, so we're asking the city council, the town of Cave Creek, to chip in $1,200 for the outside back cover of the September edition of the Twenty Things We Love About Cave Creek. That's not a good plan. Thank you for your time and consideration. September when, Bob? This will be on the September, excuse me, October edition. We started off with September, but we changed to October, so sorry about that. So be the October edition. Any questions? Nope, not that, thank you right off the bat, thank you, sir. Okay, you all have a good evening, thank you.
No additional speakers.
No additional? Normally, we'd have a town manager report, and we have an interim town manager, the town manager is on vacation. Do you have anything to add?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report? All right. No non-action items, action item, we have the consent agenda. Agenda item number one on there is approval of the August 4th, 2022 special town council work session minutes. Number two is approval of the August 15th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes. Three is approval of the August 23rd, 2022 special town council work session minutes. And number four is approval of a number twelve restaurant liquor license for Teabox Indoor Golf Club. There's a typo there, as requested by Jeffrey Craig Miller, the agent.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Wanted to get a question answered regarding item four.
Mm-hmm.
Could I ask it now, or does it have to be?
Well, we would, we would have to pull it, we would have to pull it from the consent agenda. We would pass the the first three items, then we would pull that one and and discuss it.
Separately.
Separately, and then vote it.
I'd like.
Okay, we'll remove this, so we'll just vote on the items one through three, which are the minutes. Do we have a motion for those?
So moved.
We approve one through three.
All right, do we have second? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Sova, you asked your question, please.
Yeah, in in looking at what was presented, there's an address, an obvious stagecoach building. I am, I'm just curious if this is the building. Looks like a two-story building, it's really a one-story with a mezzanine on the standalone far east side. If if this is, if that's the building. Just wanted that clarified, just.
And we don't have a map in here, do we?
Well, you got, you got a floor plan on the back, on the back page. Yeah, there it is.
The owners are here.
I know it's a liquor license, but I was just curious.
Mayor and Councilmember Sova, that is correct, and the owners are here, if you have any additional.
Is your microphone on?
It is on now.
Okay.
The owners are here to answer questions, so if you guys would like to come up.
Well, this might not be the right right time or place, but since.
Actually, it's an item, and we pulled, we've removed it for discussion, so this is perfectly a perfectly normal or.
I I get the impression that in addition to the Teabox activity, almost looks like a full-fledged restaurant with two rather large areas of outdoor seating. Is that, is that your plan to utilize outdoor restaurant weather permitting?
So it's the same exact concept as we had approved for the site plan down here.
Right.
But then Fernando put the building on the market.
Right.
The day we got that approval, and I bought it so that I don't have to build it. And it's a stunning building, so we took the space that they have and maximized it for what we feel would be, you know, the best opportunity to utilize the space. So in this location over here, we didn't think we'd have any walk-up, you know, business. It would be people coming as a pure destination. There, I feel we're also a pure destination with the benefit of the walk-up, right? That center has never had an anchor, which is depressing to me. That's the anchor. It's been basically vacant or a warehouse. And so for the walk-up traffic we'll get, for the people that are there, if they don't have their clubs or didn't come to golf, I'm going to have a place for them to sit outside. It'd be weird to not utilize the entire space, so we'll set up that entire space, which is on the outside than it is on the inside. To what extent it'll be utilized, I don't know. I don't know.
And then in your liquor application, you answered the question that you thought you'd like to be open the first part of December, that's.
Not going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you've been watching the news, but
Try not.
You can't get anything done, it's it's a little aggressive to to, yeah, so March is our current timeline.
Okay, and the good news is you've got plenty of parking there, you will have plenty of parking.
Well, hopefully, yes, I mean, there's, there's, it's empty every time I drive through.
Right.
So we're going to try and fill it up.
Thank you, and good luck.
Got your question answered?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
All right, well, let's go ahead.
Yes, that building.
You know, and you, there's no way that you can swing a golf club and not drink a beer, so.
You know, I I proved that this afternoon. Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so we're back to council for a motion for agenda item number, our consent agenda item number four. Councilman Sova, would you like to go ahead and add that back in?
And I move for approval of item number four on the consent consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I clearly have it. Moving on, general agenda item number one, which is presentation of November 2022 Cave Creek Unified School District, CCUSD, override by CCUSD Cave Creek Unified School District Superintendent Dr. Court Monroe.
Good evening.
It says, I put this on the. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Bunch, members of the council. I appreciate being back with you again tonight and allowing myself and Marcy Rodriguez, our chief financial officer, to do a short fraction of information to the council. We're kind of doing this roadshow and presenting the facts everywhere we go, that's what we do in our roles. As my father taught me, you can have your own opinion, but you can't have your own facts. And so we are out to make sure that we are very clear about those facts. I want you to know that this PowerPoint is online. In addition, there's also a frequently asked question document. So before I start, I just want to clarify a few things. First of all, I'd like to extend an invitation to the council and everyone who's in the audience. We have another home football game this Friday, it's actually our community appreciation night. Anyone over the age of 55 will get into the football game, it's Cactus Shadows for free, will also feed you, and we have a special place for you to sit. So we have really enhanced our Friday Night Lights experience, and we'd really love for the community to come out and support our boys. They're playing some really good ball, a young team, but the game we had two weeks ago is very exciting. So that's this Friday at seven o'clock for our community football game. I do want to say a few things right off the bat. We do not teach critical race theory in the Cave Creek Unified School District. Our curriculum is online, it's transparent. In fact, if you want to see the materials that are in our libraries, as well as what's in our classrooms, go online and look. In addition, this summer, we opened all of our libraries to the public for one day for community members and parents to come in and inspect any of the books that are in our libraries, or software, or tech, or, you know, books that are read to the kids, and we'll do that again this summer. It's really important to us that we're transparent, that we're worthy of the trust that the community gives us. I also want to tell you that last year, we had eight audits, eight audits last year, different types of audits for our school district. And the last 10 years of our audits are also posted online, so the community is able to see that. So without further ado, I'm going to go through a few slides and Marcy nag team a little bit on the override and what you're kind of hearing that's happening out out in the community. I want the, I'd like the council to know that we don't do arbitrary things in our school district. We have a mission, we have a vision, we have a plan, and you can see our mission statement. You'll hear me talk all the time about one team, people tease me about that remark because I see the school district as a member of the greater community. So we're partners with, we're partners with Carefree, we're partners with Scottsdale and with Phoenix. And so when people move into our area, typically they'll ask, how are the schools? And so we know that we have an impact on home values, we know that we have an impact on educating the younger generation, and we take it very seriously. So we strive to fulfill our mission through these five priorities highlighted in blue here. So we like to flash this because we want people to know that that we have a plan, and we're trying to inspire our young people to have a great experience in our in our schools. So what we're going to talk about for the next few minutes is our challenges, what an override is, some teacher salary data, and then some facts and. Close. First of all, like all public schools in Arizona, we have a lot of challenges in the Cave Creek Unified School District. It's it's very well known that per pupil funding in Arizona is one of the lowest in the nation. That means we receive our money for our budget based on student enrollment. And the money, the formula that gives us that amount of money per student was actually, it was invented in 1980. And so there's a lot of things that have happened in 42 years, and that formula hasn't been updated. And so we're on the lower end, so we get a lower amount per pupil than 47 other states. Up in this area, our student enrollment is slowly declining, there's a lot of reasons for that. Typically, when families have young kids, this is not an area where they can typically get their start in life and raise their kids because of the cost of living. We also have empowerment scholarships, vouchers that we're battling with. We also battle with private schools and a charter school. Parents have a lot of choices for their education in Arizona, and so that that all impacts us here in this area. We haven't been able to pass a lot of voter-approved initiatives. Last year, we lost a bond election that we had by 751 votes. So there was almost 23,000 votes cast in a non-election year, that was the highest percentage of voter turnout in Maricopa County, and we lost by 751. So 376 of those people flipped, we would have passed that bond election for facilities, security cameras, technology, school buses, a lot of those things. So, and then kind of the elephant in the room, as you're aware from watching the news and reading the newspaper, is there's a shortage of teachers. In fact, I almost argue there's a shortage in every industry of workers, and we're not immune in in the Cave Creek Unified School District, finding teachers, staff, bus drivers that we can be able to pay. A lot of our employees cannot afford to live up in this area, and so they will drive in 10, 12 miles. And so we are battling other school districts for very good teachers, and you're going to see that that's the primary reason for this override is so that we can compete with our neighboring school districts to pay our teachers and staff salaries. I want to make it clear that administrators would not be paid with any, administrators would not be paid with any of these override monies that we're going to talk to you about tonight. It would be our teachers and staff. So there are teachers that can work at Deer Valley, Paradise Valley, and Scottsdale for six, seven, eight, nine thousand dollars more a year. And a lot, for a lot of our teachers, that's a lot closer to where they live as well. So Marcy, come on up, we'll talk about what is an override.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Bunch and members of the council. I want to talk to you a little bit about what an override is. So an override gives school districts the ability to raise additional funds to be able to support their programs and pay their teachers. What we are asking for is a 15% increase in what our current budget is. So we have a formula, and that that's what we have to budget, that's what we raise taxes on. We're asking the voters to pay an increase in taxes to be able to support another 15%. What we have found in our research is that there are 55 school districts in Maricopa County. Out of those 55, 48 of them have overrides, and a lot of them have bonds as well. So these are the districts that we compete with for teachers, for students, because other districts are able to offer programs or higher wages than we are. So that is the primary reason why we're asking the voters for this. That 15% increase will last for a period of seven years. Now, the first five, it's 100%, but then it goes down the sixth and the seventh. So we would be coming out and asking the voters again, probably in that fourth and fifth year before it goes down, to renew it. So it's really important that we are transparent about how we're spending that money, how we are using it the way we say we're going to use it. We will be putting a community oversight committee in place for them to work and be able to see the financials, the books will be open for them. And we are really happy and proud that our governing board voted 5-0 to support this initiative. And what they said was, let's let the voters decide. This is a community initiative. So only just give you a little bit of sample of what the tax rate is here in Cave Creek and what that history's been. So our school district, so that's all, it's not just the people who live in the Cave Creek city boundaries, but it's Cave Creek, Carefree, Rio Verde, North Scottsdale, North Phoenix, so we encompass about 180 square miles, pretty big district. So the people that live within those boundaries, this is what their tax bill was last year. I think you've all gotten tax bills this year, and that number is a little bit different, but just to give you an idea, it's been pretty steady. It went down last year, the school district property owners paid $90 less to the school district last year than they did the year before. When we look at how we compare to other unified school districts in Maricopa County, this district has the lowest property taxes of every unified school district. And I venture to say probably every school district in Arizona. But we're just looking at the unified districts because those are the K-12 districts like us. And what you'll notice with some of those higher tax rates is they have an M, a B, or a C by them. Those signify that these districts have an M and O override, a capital override possibly, and a bond. Now, yes, that causes for their tax rates to be a little bit higher, but you'll notice Cave Creek, even at the low end, is still lower than Fountain Hills, who is our neighbor, just adjacent east of us. So what Cave Creek Unified School District has, though, is the lowest tax rate, and this override will add about 21 cents to that. So even if you added 21 cents to the $1.57, and you get $1.78, we would still be lower than even Fountain Hills would be. So I'm going to turn that back over to Dr. Monroe, he's going to give you a little bit of information about teacher salary data.
So I really like the slide, the picture says a thousand words. So I'm looking at all these other school districts that we compete with and are compared with, and sometimes it's apples and oranges. And their voters have approved or supported those districts in various areas, and it's unfortunate that ours haven't. And we're we're optimistic that that may change, and that puts us at a disadvantage because we don't have those those voter-approved initiatives. So let me show you some teacher salary data, that's a picture of our Teacher of the Year event last year with a few of our board members, which was just an awesome event to recognize our teachers. So here's our average teacher pay. On the left, the ranking average teacher pay, you'll see Cave Creek is in the bottom 15% of of average teacher pay here in Arizona. Now, you'll notice the three red arrows there, those are districts that I consider our competitors. The reason I say that is we share borders with them. So they are certainly a lot larger than us. I think Scottsdale's about 21,000, and Deer Valley and Paradise Valley are a lot larger. The hard thing that, the hard conversations we have is we'll have a teacher come in and and be really emotional and say, I'm sorry, I have to leave, the price of gas is killing me, inflation is through the roof, and I live in Scottsdale, and I drive in 15 miles to Cave Creek, and they can pay me $8,000 more. So that's just a little anecdote of the conversations that that we have. If the override passes, we believe it can hurdle us up into about the 30s, we can catch up with Deer Valley, we can catch up with Paradise Valley with some of the increases that we can give the teachers and staff, and then we'd be still behind Scottsdale. Now, remember, Scottsdale's had kind of an override support, and we haven't had an override for for quite a while. So that's a very telling slide. Now, here's a map of our school districts, like Marcy said, the Cave Creek Unified School District is close to 180 square miles, you can see us there in the yellow, and you can see our competitors, Deer Valley, Scottsdale, and Paradise Valley, and you can see their average teacher pay. Now, the next slide gets a little jumbled, but what I want to tell you is we took where our teachers live, and we overlaid where our teachers live on this map, okay? So you can still kind of see the yellow with Cave Creek up there on the right. So we do have a lot of teachers that live up in our school district boundaries. However, the majority of our teachers live in those other school districts around the border, around our border there, where they can stay and work in those other districts and make more money. You can see the average salary that they could make. Again, this puts us in a disadvantage, we have the best teachers in the world, and they're very loyal, but like I said, the price of gas, inflation, and things that are happening, that's a hard argument that I can't counter, that that I, right now, financially, we can't even counter and say, we want you to stay, can we pay more? We're not in a financial situation to do that. So we do believe the override would, like I said, catch us up with those two on the left and get get us right below Scottsdale. So 65 to 75% of the monies generated for the override, it's about $5 million, would go towards staff increases, teacher increases. What would happen with the other 25% or so? Well, this would be discussions and decisions we would have with our governing board, but career, technical, and vocational education is really important to us. Not every student goes to college, and it's our job to find their, help them find their pathway for them to be able to succeed. We recently brought a law enforcement program, we're trying to work with Daisy Mountain to have almost a fire academy program, we've been talking to Chief Tobin about that. We don't even have a junior ROTC program at our high school, we don't have the the Army, the Marines, the Navy, the Air Force. And so we're trying to help our kids identify what their passion is, and can we have a program to funnel them into engineering or welding or coding? We do have a lot of programs that support us with EVIT, but we feel like this is something that we can do a better job of for for our students. Student safety and support, Uvalde happened, okay? And so we want our students to be safe and our staff to be safe, and there's things we'd like to do. We have police officers at our middle school and our high school, additional social workers, additional counselors. We're working on our on on video cameras, upgrading our video cameras to some of our schools. So those are things that we need to be able to have some funding for, to be able to do. We'd like to reduce our student fees at the high school, it's expensive to be a student at Cactus Shadows High School. Is it, how much is it to play athletics, Marcy?
$320 a sport.
Okay, $320 to play a sport, folks, I, that's embarrassing for me as the superintendent. If you go to a neighboring district, it's probably about $100. This isn't warmups, this isn't equipment, this is to be able to play the sport. Because we haven't had an override in the past, we've had to put this on the backs of our parents, which I don't want to do. I want to reduce the parking fees, reduce the class fees, reduce athletic fees. Kids have to pay a fee to join a club at the high school. With override, we can reduce that and make it easy on our families. We know our families can afford it, but they just shouldn't be paying that much. We want to keep our class sizes respectable as well. Our elementary class sizes are good, we have some higher class sizes at the high school, and override allows us to hire some more teachers. And you'll see the word up there, hard-to-fill positions and special education teachers stipends. A stipend's almost like a, almost like a signing bonus, you sign to work on, work with us, we can pay you $5,000 when you sign to come and work with us. Our other districts are able to do that, right now, we're not, and some teachers are very hard to find, special education teachers, high school math, high school physics. We were just talking to Paradise Valley Community College, this idea of high school physics teachers is almost disappearing in society because they make such little money, and people just aren't going to school in education anymore. So these would be some of the other things that, the other programs that we would use, that we would be able to fund over with override monies. And then this last slide just kind of summarizes what I've said, it lines up some of our unified districts. Remember, unified district is elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, it has our competitors there. Does that, did the community support those districts with an approved bond on the left? Yes, come down to Cave Creek Unified? No. Did the community support them with an override? Yes, all the way down in Cave Creek Unified? No. A capital outlay override, there's mostly no's and a few yeses, and then you can see our starting salary and then the average salary. So so we're optimistic that we can compete for our teachers and kind of get in the game if this override passes. Marcy, last few slides.
So just want to just review some of the facts, as I had shared, 15% of the budget is what we are asking the voters to approve. And the phase down of those funding sources, that the, it would be something we'd have to go back out and renew. So this is the dollar amount. So when we're talking about the calculation, based on our current projected budget for 23, 24, it would be about $5.1 million that would be generated by the sales tax, or I'm sorry, the property tax. So we wanted to take a look and give everybody kind of an example of what that might look like for teacher pay and staff pay. So if we gave everybody a 13% increase, and this is just an example, this isn't what we're committed, we have to work through the process with the budget review with our governing board, but this is what that could fund. Now, when we talk about classified staff, no administrators are in that category. Classified staff are our hourly employees, they are our bus drivers, they are our paraprofessionals in the classroom, they are maintenance people, they're our front office staff at the schools. So that is the group of people that would be receiving the funds as well, along with the teachers. Because when we do our research, and I've got Taco Bell paying $15 an hour, and we're paying 1380, that's not getting those employees to want to come work for us. So we need to stay competitive in those areas as well. So we want to talk about what the impact would be. So what does this mean to the average homeowner in the Cave Creek? So what does this mean to the average homeowner in the Cave Creek Unified School District? So when you look at the average home assessed value, so assessed value is not what you could sell your house for, but it's what the county taxes you on. The average home is five hundred and eighty two thousand dollars in this district. Let me tell you, the average home in the state of Arizona's average is about a hu, is about two hundred and sixty thousand. So this is one of the wealthiest districts, if not the wealthiest in the state for home values. And there was actually an article that came out and was done by Wallet Hub that says the average per household income in here in Cave Creek Unified School District is the highest in the state. So we, we, we have that affluency and we then are looking at with this average home of ten dollars a month. So a hundred and twenty two dollars a year is what the impact would be to an average homeowner. Now, if you remember, the taxes went down ninety dollars a year this, in this year. Now they will be going down even more in the coming year because there was an, a tax elimination from our property tax bills. If all of you have gotten your tax bills probably, or you're going to be getting them soon, there was a state equalization tax that was removed. And that state equalization tax reduced everybody's property tax bills. It was about forty two cents. We're looking at twenty one cents for the override. So everybody will be experiencing that lower taxes this year. So this is just kind of a snapshot of what the limited property value taxes are. And those limited property tax values, there's so much lower because the law says that you cannot increase the value of your property taxable value more than five percent a year. So it's always going to lag behind and especially since we know that home values really increased in the last year. So you can see the difference. So when somebody comes to me and there's a, there's a misnomer that says, well, my house tripled in value. So my taxes are going to triple in value. So we're trying to educate people and say, no, that's not the case because this is how the taxes work in Maricopa County in the state of Arizona. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Monroe.
And yeah, just the last thing I, I would say is, you know, we live in the greatest country in the world. I don't need to remind the council about that. And there's been a lot of people who have died to preserve our freedoms. And one of the great things that we have the opportunity to do is, is make our voice known through our elections. And so we would just like to encourage the council, everyone in this room to, to vote on November eighth and the elections. There's even a lot of people who live on the face of the earth who would die for the freedom and the ability to cast their vote in an election. And so that's our presentation and we can answer any questions that the town council may have.
Dr. Monroe, what, how did, how have test scores fared in, in the, in the district with, with, with COVID and all the mask mandates and those things that we had going on?
We just, we just, there was just a new statewide assessment that was implemented. We just did a presentation to our governing board on the recent scores that we had. Anytime you do a new test, the scores are a little lower. However, what I will say is I'm really proud of our test scores. We tested higher than Paradise Valley, Deer Valley, Scottsdale. Scottsdale had us in a few areas, but not that I'm competitive. But, but overall, I'm really proud of our teachers and the gains that our, our kids had. We had ninety eight percent of our students graduate from Cactus Shadows High School, which is probably close to the highest in the state. And I will say the ACT score, we took all high schoolers, take the ACT now, or I'm sorry, all of our juniors. And I will say our, our, our test score ACT average for our juniors last year was higher than any other high school in the area. So I think there's really good things happening. I wouldn't say that the, that COVID didn't hurt students. I think social emotionally, I think it was challenging for students. I'm very proud that our district decided to go back to school first. We met the needs of the community. We became masks optional faster than a lot of our neighbors. So I, I don't think that that ma, means our kids didn't have a gap in their education. But I would assert that I think we're in a lot better spot than our neighboring districts because of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Let me, let me get the retired teacher here.
Tom?
Is a retired teacher something like a retired Marine? No, we won't go there. What, what, what is the average class size at the high school, your secondary?
You know what? At the secondary, I would have to, I think our, what is our thirty, what does it say in our policy?
At thirty five.
Thirty five is where we are at in the policy. I don't think our classes get to that size, but they are on the higher end. Elementary, we're about twenty four, but some of our non-elective areas are, or I'm sorry, not the non-core class areas, like outside of English and math and science and social studies, some of those classes are a little higher at the high school.
Good? I'm good.
Councilman Silva?
Dr. Monroe, in your presentation, it had shown that sixty five to seventy five percent of the fifteen percent, the dollars coming in would go towards teachers and the staff. Are you prohibited in increasing that number to say ninety percent? I know that's a balancing act, but i- if you had more money to pay the teachers and staff, possibly you would go beyond Scottsdale and, and even get in a better position. And I, you know, it's like, what came first, the chicken or the egg? You know, because you need the support and dollars in those other areas. I agree, but what's most important? Or are you prohibited from doing that by your board or by the, the state or the legislature?
No, we're not prohibited. And that, and that's why, like in this sample, we just, when Marcy and I were coming up with the presentation, we wanted to come up with a very safe conservative number. That's why the example we used was thirteen percent. But no, we're not prohibited. So that certainly could be more. And again, those would be great plans and conversations with our governing board. Because yeah, it could have us go even higher on our teacher average salary and then our teacher starting salary as well, to be able to attract people who are just graduating from college, college. So, so yeah, no prohibition to, to that.
Have, have you, has your board or the district considered looking at that and doing that?
Yes, those would be, if the, if the override passes, there would be a series of board meetings, public meetings where, yeah, those kinds of things would be discussed.
Would it not be better to try and discuss it before the election? I think you would get more people on board. This is comments I hear from residents in my neighborhood, several of which are teachers. They'd like to see the majority of that money go to, towards the teachers and the staff members, realizing there'd still be a shortfall on, on those other areas. But they felt that was more important to track better teachers, keep them longer and put yourself not forty eighth, but maybe move up to thirty five.
Yes, no, I think it's a, no, it's a great point, certainly. Certainly we'll have the, continue to have those conversations. We have a board election coming up as well in November where we have two board seats coming up that are open, that we have candidates buying for. So I think that's really good input. I appreciate that. And we're looking forward to hopefully having those conversations. But yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Morris, Mayor elect Morris.
Dr. Monroe, last time you're here, you mentioned the number fifty one percent. That's the market, I'm going to use the business terms. That's your market share of the students. And you're surrounded by big districts. We have ten thousand in our district and twenty and thirty thousand districts around there. And I know personal cases of people driving past our schools to go to Pinnacle. There's one working at the Buffalo Chip probably tonight.
Yes.
So if, if I'm looking at this as a business person saying, hey, the product isn't attracting any more than fifty one percent. What attention are you putting on issues like that?
Well, that's, that's the elephant in the room. Governor Ducey is very proud that we are the state of choice. So there are charter schools. In fact, now there's vouchers that you can take. And you can take a voucher and you can actually go to a private school and a religious school and taxpayers will pay for it. So this is the elephant in the room is how do we attract our kids? And we're trying to change that paradigm. That's what kind of keeps me up at night. I believe in the quality of education that we provide, the success of our high school students, the universities they go to, the industries. However, our capture rate is fifty two percent. I will tell you, going down to other districts, their capture rate's not over eighty percent. So we are a state of choice by purpose because our legislators have passed law, passed laws that a student who goes to a charter school may receive even more funding than, than a, a normal public school. And so we are having to raise our game to compete with those schools. And we live in a very nice area and private schools are, is healthy competition. And so we do lose a lot of our students to, to, to private schools. We lose a lot of our athletes to Pinnacle or other schools and we're trying to change that. We have a new head football coach. We're trying to change the trajectory of programs because, you know, everyone's student is going to the NFL, right? And, and the high schools, we need to attract the right students. So that's what we're trying to figure out. We have a heavy social media presence. We're trying to be out there and share the good news. There's millions of good things that happen in our schools every day. However, what gets traction is that one little negative story that gets out there. And so we have a marketing campaign. We're very aggressive on our social media channels to try to tell our story. Because people will, like I said, they'll come up with their own opinions or get lost in the black hole of Facebook and they'll generate a judgment based on a post of two people when maybe there is five hundred other people at the school who are perfectly happy. So we're trying to figure that out because we need to shift that paradigm. And I know a lot of our school districts are, are going through the same thing. I just met with superintendents and Scottsdale is down about six hundred kids. Paradise Valley is down about a thousand kids. And so public school enrollments, if you're not in a growing area, is down in, in general. A lot of kids didn't come back from the pandemic. And if you're an online learner, the pandemic was exactly what those companies needed to help them with online learning. So, so we need to increase our capture rate. We need to move that needle and that's, that's certainly what we're try, trying to do.
Thank you. Thank you. As I, if that football coach doesn't work, I understand Herm Edwards is looking for work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to number two, which is a notice of intention to increase certain Cave Creek water rates and capacity fees, Desert Hills water rates, capacity fees and Cave Creek wastewater rates and capacity fees.
Good luck to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sean Cruz, your utility director. So this is, I use the term, but it's basically formality in our rate setting process. It's actually sets our clock. We're required by state statute to provide this notice of intent when we're raising utility rates and or capacity fees. What this does is it sets a sixty day clock for us. So sixty days from now, we have to have a public hearing on the, on the, on the subjects to do this forward. And thirty days prior to that public hearing, we actually have to publish the, the documentations, the report. So we've had a couple of work sessions with council. We've got some good feedback. The reports are being finalized. We actually do before the next hearing, we want to actually talk to council again to make sure that before the report gets published, that we have heard and we have everybody's comments together. Then we're actually going to start a public outreach because obviously we want to make sure that our residents are aware of this, our customers are aware of this. So the goal is with tonight's action, again, sets the clock. We would be before October twentieth, we'd have the final report published. We're hoping much before that so we can start educating people and getting feedback from property, our customers. And then on the November twenty first date, that's actually when we actually asked council to adopt the utility rates and we'd hold the first hearing on the capacity fee updates. The capacity fees actually are in town code and require two hearings. The rates themselves are done by resolution, do not require two hearings. So we can do that November twenty first, but that's the timeline we're looking for. Then the second meeting would happen December fifth and that would be the second hearing of the capacity fees. The goal is to try and make this all become effective for January of this next year. So that we're both increasing the capacity fees, which are the fees that new connector, new people connecting to the systems, the water or wastewater systems pay and the rates themselves of the existing users, any future users would pay for the systems. And that's the Cave Creek Water System, the Desert Hills Water System and the Cave Creek Wastewater System. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Question from council?
Mayor, we're going to have additional sessions to fresh out some of the details.
Believe that was what we had decided last, last workshop.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else from council? All right, well, they're on notice now. Let's go ahead and do that. I see, go ahead. I thought that's what you were asking me.
Oh, okay.
I've got these glasses on that get fuzzy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I can't take them off.
Once I look down there.
Okay, motion to adopt a notice of intention to increase certain Cave Creek water rates and capacity fees, Desert Hills water rates and capacity fees and Cave Creek wastewater rates and capacity fees.
Second. Got a couple of, so we had a second and a third comment.
This is one of those legal obligations sixty days before we have the, the hearing. And this will get the show on the road.
All right, all those. You had the second one, Tom.
Yeah, I did have the second and I hope that the community will see that one of our really important things to do is to structure our water rates to encourage people to use less water. There are people who use less than five thousand gallons per month, our house included. There are other people who are using in excess of twice that much. And I'd like to see progressive rates that encourage people to use less water.
Based on the diminishing capacity of Lake Powell and Lake Mead.
Very much so. Not capacity, yeah, those, those, those reservoirs are down to about one quarter and they're continuing to go down and we're looking at mandatory water shortages for this whole state of Arizona, which will affect Cave Creek at some point.
Yep. All right, council, anybody, any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, sign above, saying aye. Opposed? Eyes clearly have it. Motion carries seven zero. Agenda item number three, council discussion, possible approval of resolution number R twenty twenty two dash fifteen, resolution to the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Town Manager Kerry Direk as chief financial officer of the town for the purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's Office for the fiscal year twenty twenty two. Oh, hi.
Hi. I think this is fairly straightforward resolution.
Closer.
It's fairly straightforward resolution. It's done every year and the past two years it was done. And I talked to the Auditor's General's Office and asked them, did you get it? Did you get it? And then they waited and waited because I was new. I wanted to make sure they got both the prior year and this year. And then they came back and they said, we got it, but it's wrong. So they want us to use their template, which I was not aware of. So I redid them on their template and now they're bothering me for them. So if you could please approve the resolution, I will send them forward the corrected resolution with their template.
So your preference is we don't table this tonight?
I like to keep the auditor general happy.
Any question from council on this one? There is public comment on this as well.
No comment.
We have nobody. We're back to council for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve resolution number R two oh two two dash fifteen, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Town Manager Kerry Direk as chief financial officer of the town for purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's Office for the fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Second.
We have motion, second comment?
Finance Director said it all.
None, all right. All those in favor of the motion signify, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes clearly have it. Motion carries seven zero. Agenda item number four, and folks in the audience don't think we're crazy. Listen to the very last number in this one because it's going to sound very similar to what we just did. Council discussion, possible approval of resolution number R twenty two, twenty twenty two dash sixteen, a resolution of the mayor and town and council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Town Manager Kerry Direk as chief financial officer of the town for the purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's Office for the fiscal year twenty twenty three. So we got to do it for the next year too. Question? I think Shirley's a explanation probably is good for this one. There's public comment on this?
None.
Nope, we're back to council for a motion, please.
Mayor, I'll do it. Motion to approve resolution number R two zero two-two dash one six. A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Town Manager Kerry Direk as Chief Financial Officer of the town with a purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's Office with the fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Comment? None. We're back to council for a vote. All those in favor. They beat me to it. All those opposed? Nobody's opposed. Seven zero. Motion carries. Agenda item number five, council discussion and approval to purchase a PM ten certified sweeper from Norwood Equipment for amount up to, oh, wow, three hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents placed on the agenda by the town engineer. Mr. Marin, I suppose you're going to tell us all about this wonderful street sweeper.
I certainly am. We were fortunate enough to to gain an award from or not award, but a grant from Maricopa County Association of Governments that are known as MAG that will provide us with about ninety ninety to ninety-five percent of the overall cost will be reimbursed. So we received a grant of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. But we have to buy the thing first. And so are currently, we have two sweepers. One of them is a twelve year old sweeper that currently is. I have to say maybe in the shop six to eight weeks a year. It's costing us ten to twelve thousand dollars a year just to maintain it and keep it going. And we have a new sweeper that for probably about forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars of the town's money will replace it. So it seems like a worthy to retire the old girl and get a new one. By the way, I want to apologize for looking like I just came from an Alice Cooper concert. I lost my a battle with my dermatologist.
Yeah, it does happen after a certain age. Question from council.
Mayor.
Councilman Silva.
What do we do with the old sweeper? Do we sell it or going to keep it and use it as a backup or spare?
We have to, a part of this grant is to turn it back in. We get to sell. We get to auction it off, but we don't get to keep all the money. Because I think we get to keep about twenty-five percent that we have to work out with MAG what the reimbursement is. That was a seventy-five twenty-five grant where these new ones are ninety-five. So we don't get to make money off the deal is what they what they say. So we will be turning it back in. And whatever we get out of it, we get.
What do you feel we'll get? My, the reason I'm asking would, I'm assuming it wouldn't be enough to cover the forty thousand dollars.
No, we have about thirty. I have to go back and look at our budget. We have about thirty-five thousand budgeted. We unfortunately experienced a couple of increases that between the time you put in the grant and the time you can actually buy it, you get a few, you get some increases and we were, we bid it as a shorts, and now we're getting an L G.
So we might get eight thousand dollars out of it.
Possibly because we're only getting twenty-five percent of whatever we recover.
And then how, what's the life expectancy of a new modern one?
Probably the ten to twelve years. Again, it becomes a diminishing return where it starts costing you more in equipments and parts because unlike some of our other equipment, this one is picking up stuff that probably, you know, the people leave on the streets or end up in the streets and it's carrying really tons of material each time we clean up after a rainstorm.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Roy.
I just congratulations on getting the grant. Very proud of you. That really helps this town out and saves us money to be spent in other places. Appreciate it.
That's also, I want to give Tyler Thurman. He's my superintendent. He's been tracking these grants and been able to be very successful in helping to get.
It's the second time he's done this, isn't it?
Yes, we we have the, this is a mechanical unit. The other one we got was a vacuum unit. So we're trying to keep two different types of units because they function differently under different scenarios. So we're trying to get, we're trying to keep one of each in our fleet.
Anything else from council? There is public comment on this one.
No comments.
We have no comments. So someone want to make a motion?
I'll make it.
Don't fight over it.
Motion to approve purchase of a PM ten certified sweeper for Norwood Equipment for an amount up to three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents.
She beat you to it. Comment? No comments? This is financial, obviously. So roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Monacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Councilmember Sova?
Yes.
Mayor Bynum?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next one is spending money again. Council discussion, agenda number six, council discussion approval with purchase of Herco trailer mounted vacuum unit with exercise exerciser from AZ Water, Wastewater Industries Incorporated, Prince AWI for an amount up to eighty thousand dollars. And I'm betting that our utilities director is going to come over here and talk to us about this thing. This is something we've been renting, isn't it?
Pardon, was that mayor?
We've been renting this function?
Yes, we have. So when I came on board to the town three and a half years ago, we did not actually have a similar unit to this. So what this is, is a hall behind the vector trailer unit that we can pull with our service body trucks. It has multiple functions. It has a vacuum unit that allows us to do small excavations, clean out water meters, clean out valve cans. It also has a valve, this one, we're requesting the purchase actually has a valve exercising machine. So instead of our staff actually having to manually turn the valves, we can set the unit onto it. It would functionally work and start setting pressures up to four hundred foot pounds per inch to actually twist that valve open. So you can basically set and forget it while it's sitting there doing its thing to hopefully break some valves open for us. It actually has a little pressure washer system, pressure, not washer, but a pressure jet system for the excavation. So you're actually liquefying and making a slurry, and that's what's being factored up typically. It's not a wet vacuum. It's actually a hydraulic one. And this one's unique. In fact, it actually has a hydraulic accessory unit onto it. So the the pump unit that actually powers it actually allows us to get auxiliary hydraulic pumps, saws, et cetera, that we can tie this off to. So I think it'd be a very good useful piece of equipment to add to our fleet. We have been renting one for a while now. Just to give some numbers, we have five hundred or five thousand meter boxes. So this will allow us to better service these. We have over a hundred miles of distribution lines, and we actually typically get about a hundred and twenty breaks between the lines and the service lines. Every meter has its own service line that staff have to respond to. We have fifteen hundred water valves in the system, and that's not including the auxiliary valves that are tied to our fire hydrants. We have over six hundred fire hydrants in the system also. So this piece of equipment would allow us to better maintain that system. We have been renting this. We wanted to try out different systems to see which would work before we went back to our vendors and asked them to give us quotes. You'll see as part of the attachment, we had three vendors in total provide quotations for this. We believe the Herco unit actually best meets our needs and actually is the lowest cost unit. The bad thing is that the unit actually has thirty-five weeks. As if if we get approval tonight, we can issue them a purchase order, but it'll be thirty-five weeks before delivery for the unit. So we're asking for this. This is be a valuable tool for us to do maintenance and also deal with emergencies on the system. So we can start doing excavations and emergency situation before we can get out a larger truck. This will not eliminate the need for us to still rely on the larger vacuum trailers, the the vac truck systems. Those are a few hundred thousand dollars for one of those. Actually, I think three to four hundred thousand dollars. We'll still be using them, but a lot less. So that's why we believe this unit will pay for itself and just rentals in about a year and a half. So we don't have to continue renting it and be something that we would own as a part of our fleet.
Questions from council?
Mayor. I have a question.
Former Vice Mayor Sova.
Sean, I assume you and your department looked at to see if there were any possible grants out there coming up that would cover some part of this.
We have been looking at grant opportunity, Mayor and Councilmember. You know, unlike, say, the PM ten where there's actually funding gates distributed to MAG typically, these types of things are not as much so, but we continue to look as much as we can for grants.
But there's none, there's none available.
We haven't seen any for this type of a unit, piece of equipment.
What type of warranty comes with this, a new one?
I believe it's a one year, and then after that, we would talk to the manufacturer, the local vendor, the local supplier for Herco is a company called AWI, which is local. So we could look to have them help us service the unit. Similar to the sweeper systems, these, they do take a beating. So it's something that we manage. We'd want to have a service contract with someone to to help them come out. We don't have our own fleet services here in the town. So it'd be some of we have come out to our water ranch and help us service and keep the unit functioning, working.
And then with normal usage, what's the expended expected life expectancy of the unit?
I would estimate we could probably get up to ten years if we take care of the unit. You know, what actually what I've seen in the past is, you know, sometimes the hydraulic hoses will go, the vacuum systems will have problems with all those are maintainable. Eventually, you'll get the chamber itself, the vacuum chamber will start to rust out. So with good maintenance, ten years is pretty much a no brainer.
Any else from council? Any more questions?
Just just one more. You said the magic thing, the one, the one point four year payout. You had me at that. It's actually a financial analysis.
Did you see me look over at you when he said that? Well, I did. There is public comment on this one.
No comments.
No, nobody? Okay. Councilman Morris, would you like to make the motion on this one at one point?
Motion approved purchase of a new Herco track trailer, mounted vacuum trailer with valve exerciser from AZ Wastewater Industries Incorporated, AWI, for an amount up to eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
No comments. I don't see. Okay, we're financial again.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Monacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Councilmember Sova?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Bynum?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Go order that thing. All right, here we go. Here, you know, when we passed the budget this year, we had, I think, three people in the room that didn't weren't actually part of staff. So I'm guessing that the reason that we've got a lot of people sitting here this evening is for this agenda item number seven, which is case Z dash twenty-two dash zero one Vickers. Council approval of first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero two and ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the official town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zone of a parcel totaling approximately two and a half acres, parcel two eleven dash forty-seven dash zero four three C from a desert rural residential DR eighty-nine zone to a commercial buffer CB zone. Placed on the agenda by the planning director who ducked out because of family birthday tonight.
Left me here, Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and decide to sit since I can't reach that, since Sean moved it up more. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Staff is here this evening to bring forward to council case number Z dash twenty-two dash oh one, Vickers Zone Change request, first reading of ordinance oh to twenty twenty-two dash oh two. The zone change request is to change the underlying zoning and amend the town of Cave Creek zoning map for parcel two eleven dash four seven dash zero four three C from DR eighty-nine to commercial buffer. The parcels within the specific area plan and consist of a commercial land use designation per the twenty twenty-one general plan. The property is located two parcels deep north of northeast corner of Fifty-third Street and Carefree Highway behind existing general commercial zone properties currently occupied by Starbucks, Dunn Edwards, and Jiffy Loop. The applicant has not submitted a site plan review application as they intend to ask for consideration to amend the zoning map in advance of finalizing the site design, including preparation of grading and drainage points. The property would still require pre-application conference with all departments prior to submission of the site plan review application or additional scrutiny is given is given to the project and development criteria are reviewed for compliance with town codes, ordinance, and guidelines. This case was presented before the Planning Commission on August eighteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, where the commission voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval for case Z dash twenty-two dash oh one, with one commissioner stating, quote, "I can find no legal, ethical, or responsible way to object to rezoning, given that it is consistent with the general plan at this location," end quote. Case number Z dash twenty-two dash oh one conforms with the requirements outlined in the zone change application and is consistent with the general plan and Carefree Highway specific area plan. Staff likes to note that this case is solely for a zone change request and whether to propose commercial buffer zone is appropriate for this location. Mr. Mayor, at this moment, are there any questions for staff? If not, the applicant is here to answer any questions.
All right, council, Councilman Sova.
No, sir.
No?
No questions, rather.
I do.
I'll I'll take up a question. I'm not quite sure here on the process. This was approved by the Planning Commission. Exactly what did the Planning Commission approve?
Planning Commission recommended approval for changing of the underlying zoning district from DR eighty-nine to commercial buffer. It's a it's a recommendation of approval. It's not by commission and approve. They just recommended approval. Councilmember Monacino?
Yes.
Apologize.
I should know that, having been on the Planning Commission. Did they applicant present the site plan at that meeting?
The applicant didn't present the site plan, but it was provided to the county or commission members, Councilmember Monacino. So it wasn't presented, but it was
Okay.
provided to them, Councilmember.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes, I read the minutes from the Plan Commission meeting. I'd like to know if you could explain to me how this rezon request does conform to the SAP and to the general plan.
Based off of the land use map and the general plan and also in the specific area plan is designated as a commercial land use designation. So it's based off the land use map within the general plan and also the map outline within the specific area plan.
The map outline?
Is that what you said? Yeah, within the specific area plan. So it's designated as commercial land use within that area, but it's not currently zoned commercial. So.
So they need a zone change.
Yeah, we need a zone change to, in order to move forward as amending the this land use map, not the land use map, but the zoning district. Apologies, Councilmember Roy.
Thank you.
Councilman Morris?
The parcel immediately east is residential.
Correct. Councilmember Morris?
Was that changed to commercial buffer? That's part of that, the Meritage, labeled Meritage Homes here, though it's not Meritage Homes now, but.
That's you're thinking to the north of Black Mountain Reserve, is that?
Yeah, no, but but the parcel that's immediately east of the parcel under discussion is in the same commercial buffer. Would you consider same commercial buffer area? Why is that housing?
It's the same.
DR eighty-nine is.
Yeah, it's all, no, it's a Meritage Homes, directly east, right behind the lots is going to be those residential lots directly east.
I'm trying to find out is is what why the homes wrapped around because one of those looks like it it's in the same SAP, the two parcel deep SAP. That's the one that's just north of what would be a McDonald's if that ever gets built. I I can answer that. That's that is that housing area is something that can be accommodated by the general designation of commercial buffer. Small lot housing. It it's in the zoning code. And so it's essentially one of those things that Yellowway Ridge. Are given. Yeah.
Anything else from council? We're just going to sit here, huh? All right. Since the, Mr. Sims? I I see you there. The
Yes, sir.
The understanding on this, and I'm reading, reading a a a statement that was made by Commissioner Boris, where he stated that the site plan is conceptual and is part of the requirement of the application for a rezoning request. The primary interest tonight is, does the property meet the requirements for rezoning? The site plan will be reviewed at a later date. And then basically, that's exactly where we're at tonight. And we don't, we don't care about traffic. We don't care about anything else. We're just, does it, does this? And we don't, we don't care about traffic. We don't care about anything else. We're just, does it, does this parcel meet the requirements to be changed from, from DR eighty-nine to commercial buffer, if I understand this correctly?
Mr. Mayor, what I think Chairman Boris is telling you, that this gives you a peek at what the site plan will be at the point when you have the greatest discretion to say yes or no. This is a legislative act tonight, and it'll be, it'll culminate with a second read. What Mr. Boris is saying to you is, and the, and I think this is a good idea. You get to see what the applicant intends to do before you grant the zoning. This is your greatest latitude. I think the point you're making, once you get the site plan, traffic, ingress and egress, setbacks, that is all administrative, ministerial. And if the applicant meets the conditions, you have to approve the site plan. But tonight, you have the discretion as the legislative body to say yes or no on the zoning and what Mr. Boris is saying to you. You get to see what the applicant intends to do with the conceptual site plan, but there will be a future site plan. But there, there's more rigorous analysis as to when you can say yes or no on, on, on a site plan approval, because it's, it's ministerial. You're applying, you're applying criteria set out in your zoning code.
Yeah, and as you, as you recall, we redid the commercial, are the commercial buffer in that SAP, the use is about a year, a little over a year ago, after we had to allow something that we didn't particularly care for.
Exactly, and that's the point. This gives, this is when you get to express your care. This is where you get to say yes or no.
Well, I just made it worse.
No, not at all.
What, what the council has often liked in the past is when both parts of the process are brought to the council at the same time. That way you see what the zoning request is, you also get to see what the site plan is with the landscaping on all of the other attributes that are part of a site plan. This request is to do the first part of that only, to change the zoning from DR eighty-nine to a commercial buffer. Sometime in the future, the developer will come in with a fully configured site plan with, you know, fifteen, twenty pages of notes and information. And that way, that, at that time, and it'll go to the commission first. And if the commission recommends approval, then it'll come to that, well, no matter what the commission does, it'll come to the council. And the council will then make a decision relative to that specific site plan. This is just the first step of a two, essentially a two-step process.
My question. Mr. Mayor, why did they deviate from the process? Why didn't we get a site plan? Is it just for saving them cost?
Councilmember Roy, are you asking why didn't he submit a site plan application?
Yes, along with this rezoning request.
It's not the process.
Mr. Smith just told us it was.
We, well. A conceptual, a conceptual site plan of what the applicant, they intend to move forward with the site plan application is what is required throughout the process, not submitting a site plan application currently. In the past, from, to the best of my knowledge, a lot of applicants did submit a zone change along concurrently with the site plan application to move the process moving forward quickly on their end. However, the applicant chose to rezone first to submitting the site plan application, submitting the site plan application to be contingent on if they could get the property rezoned or not. Councilmember Roy.
A lot of expense involved in the site plan and all that other stuff. And, and this SAP, when we created this, I think we created, Reg was on the council when we created this, and, and the reason that area back there is, is part of the SAP was, was the thought process at the time was for medical offices and possibly assisted living for people who didn't want to leave the area because they, they loved it up here. That was what we wanted. And, and this SAP was not written tight enough to actually keep the homes from being built in there to begin with. That was not ever part of the plan, was to have a, a more dense, dense home area, just so you get the history on the thing. Any questions from council on any of this?
I was on the council.
Yeah.
So do we have discretion to not approve this tonight and require that they be, that the site plan come in with the rezoning?
No.
Yes. Now, we weren't, we couldn't before, because when he comes in with the uses that, that, that fit the SAP.
Couldn't miss Mr. Sims' answer.
Here comes. Mr. Mayor, I, Mr. I, Councilmember Morris, I agree with Mr. Mayor. You have to, you have to apply the conditions in your zoning code. And I, 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 most of my jurisdictions don't have this idea about a conceptual site plan. Land use is something that you get to decide, and then for the reasons the mayor just described, it's sometimes it's very expensive to undertake the site plan. And so they want to make sure they get the entitlements before they incur the expense. But here, you do get the review of the conceptual site plan. And if you don't like it, then you have the right to say no. But I don't think you have the right to ask for a site plan approval that occurs after zoning entitlement.
And, and, and aft, after granting, granting the, the zoning changes, when we would, we would ensure that the, the use in the site plan met the criteria we have for the SAP and commercial buffer, which was, as you recall, it got, it got pretty, a lot tighter than it was before. Right, Mr. Sims?
Yes, sir.
All right.
One comment that I think the only time a applicant, be it a builder, developer, would come in in addition to zoning change application with a, a formal site plan with the application would be to speed up the process. Yes, he's out that amount of money. He's taking a risk of spending X number of dollars with his engineer, land planner, so on and so forth, but could possibly save him that knows how long, six months, maybe a year. And if he has a user in hand, that's the reason that some people, some applicants will do that, usually a bigger firm. So I think we're following our ordinances and we don't need one at this time, per our ordinance.
Councilman Monacino, you wanted to?
If I understood correctly, this is a legislative act, a zoning change, okay? And we have a little more leeway in our, our, our decision. And administratively, I agree. If they've satisfied all the requirements, we have to approve it, not in a legislative act.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Now, Stephen, is there not, on Carefree Highway, I think around fifty, fifty-first street, a parcel where this exact action was taken? Where we made a conversion, a zoning conversion from DR eighty-nine to commercial buffer? And it is, it sat there for the past year, year and a half.
To the best of my knowledge, there is a current parcel that is vacant that was rezoned, I want to say possibly probably wouldn't even like to take a guess, Vice Mayor Smith, because I was possibly still working elsewhere at that time, but it's prior to my time being here, but it has been vacant for quite some time. We did have a couple pre-apps for that property, but nothing moved forward to the best of my knowledge, because they had to rezone the other parcel that was adjacent to it, because that one is currently DR eighty-nine, Vice Mayor Smith.
Okay, thank you.
But I remember that, that the developer's business model was, you give me my zoning change, and then I'll tell you what I'm gonna do with the property.
Yeah, but he's, but he's
No, no.
Seriously limited by what, by the, by the changes we made to the SAP for, for, for CB. Yeah. All right, any questions of the applicant? What are your plans?
Yeah, I, I have, okay, what, why are so many parking places?
It's a requirement that's in, unfortunately for us, it doesn't paint a good picture. And that's been a, a big comment from a lot of the folks at our meeting and at the council here, the council meeting. Unfortunately, I have to put that many parking spaces on there based off of the proposed conceptual site plan that I provided.
Stephen, what's, what's the, what's driving that?
It's based off of a gross floor area, Councilmember Morris. So they have two stories proposed within this development.
So you're, you're not gonna have the traffic
No.
to support all these parking places?
Would you like to go over the business?
Yeah, so I own and operate a garage door company in Flagstaff, Arizona. My dad started the company in nineteen seventy-six. We've been a local community in Sunnyside and Flagstaff since nineteen seventy-six, and my plan is to expand the business down to Phoenix. Where I actually came from Flagstaff. I was twelve minutes late to the meeting because I was hanging doors in Flagstaff. Have one of my employees here, Emilio Rodriguez, and he's planning on coming down and helping us expand our operation. And this was a good parcel for us. And Tim Spence, who is the current owner of the property, has been nothing but helpful, trying to get this through the works. But, you know, we're a small business. We're looking to expand. We don't have the funds or the means to be able to go through rigorous engineering and actual site plan approval. I also own and operate a structural engineering company as well, and so I'm very familiar with many of the, the town terms, the, the town requirements. And it's not a, a risk that we as a company are willing to take. Yeah, so that leaves us at trying to get zoning. That's the sole intent of the conceptual site plan is to get the DR eighty-nine rezone to commercial buffer, so we have a chance at expanding our operation.
So sales and repairs of garage doors for new and, new and existing?
That is correct.
Mayor, I have a question for the applicant.
Sure.
This Exhibit A, which is just a site plan that you did submit, just two dimensional. Were you planning the garage, overhead garage door operation occupying all the square footage or most of it? Or do you have, are you planning on subletting any of it at this time?
We are unsure at this time. Our, our, our growth, our expected growth and what we have been doing lately, my hope is that, yes, we will own and occupy the entire space. To when that will happen, I cannot answer.
Do you, you don't manufacture the doors, do you? You, you order them and then you get them in, you keep them in stock?
Yes, sir.
And then you install them as needed, repair work or new construction? Thank you.
All right. Okay. Much as I hate to say this. There's a public hearing on this issue. I open public hearing.
Philip Hopper?
And remember, this is strictly the requirement, where they meet the requirements for the, for the zoning change or not. Mr. Sims, any clarification before we start from the folks? Oh, you're muted.
No, no, sir. You, I think, I, I think they can talk about the conceptual site plan, but they can't get into detail, because that comes in the actual site plan process that will be a subsequent activity.
Would, would traffic be part of what they can discuss with us?
I think they can, they can talk generically that they're concerned that traffic, but they can't talk about curb cuts and access points, but they can say, I, I believe this kind of property generates too much traffic for the, for the zoning category. They can see it that way.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Philip Hopper. I live in the property adjacent to where the proposed change is. And we're a new development there, and we are not going to be a, a buffer. We're adjacent to this property. Half of our property will be next door to this. When you guys approved the housing development that went in with the smaller lots, half of your buffer was taken away. So now we have a residential area, and you're wanting to put a commercial buffer in right next door. It's gonna be a lot of noise. It's gonna be lights. There's gonna be heavy traffic. We have private roads. They're not made for heavy trucks. We don't have a gate because we weren't allowed to put up a gate. And the designated turnaround for people that get what do you call it, disoriented, is to come through our sub-development, and we require, we're required to maintain our own roads, and they're not designed for heavy trucks. They're not designed for semis. So this has a lot of problems for us, plus the fact that this commercial development along the highway is gonna have a new McDonald's going in within the next year. That's gonna increase the traffic by about fourfold over what it is now. So that's gonna be on top of the traffic with this development. I think it would be a much better idea to have this property kept as residential and put some houses in there. So that's what I have to say, because it's gonna severely affect our property values. We're all new residents of Cave Creek, and we love it here, and we'd like to keep it the way it is. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Randall Phelps?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Randall Phelps.
Get a little closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can now.
Thank you. Randall Phelps and I live close to the gentleman that was just up, my neighbor there, there. My, my comments and I have changed significantly now that I understand the procedure a little better, but I do want to address the zoning. And I want to address the intent, and the intent is a buffer. It's a buffer. And it's hard for me, I think it's fair to say, when you're looking for a buffer, it's a step down from commercial, right? Or a light commercial. And as the mayor, as you pointed out tonight, just a few minutes ago, you were hoping to get an assisted living or a medical center, because we're right across the street from Abrazo. I've been there twice in the last year. And we would like to have something like that. My neighbor's talking about small lot residential. I'm not certain that, that I agree with the applicant in his characterization that he's not manufacturing. I think it's a safe premise. Well, first of all, let me back up. For forty-two years, I've been a home builder and developer. I built my first spec house when I was twenty-six years old. I spent the last thirty-one years, thirty-two years in Las Vegas. I've lived here for one year. My wife and I moved here to be close to our daughter, son-in-law, and grandbaby, who is one. I'm no longer active building and developing. I still have the fire in the belly, but I'm sixty-eight years old. It's in my rearview mirror, so to speak, but I want to get back to what this young man's doing. I, first of all, I've been in this guy's shoes before. He's, he's right in the middle of the grind. I've been there. I've done that. I support that, right? And I don't, I, I don't begrudge the owner from selling his property, and I don't begrudge a developer from developing his property. We have to think about the use. And when it comes to garage doors, if you take those parts and partially assemble them or inventory them, it's tantamount to manufacturing. And I can't get there to say, I just can't get there, that commercial can be used as a manufacturing use. It's about the use. And I know we're gonna get some disagreement from it, from the applicant, but he, if he's thought, if he's, when I looked at his site plan, he's got some pigeonholes for separate suites. But now he's wanting to use, say, I'm gonna grow and, and occupy the whole building. Well, if he's occupying, occupying the whole building, and if garage doors are his business, it's at least, at minimum, a partial manufacturing. And I just respectfully submit, I think that use is too heavy. So it's, you got two, you got a thing here called zoning is what we're here for. But now it's about the use. So my question to staff is, under commercial zoning, I'm talking to you, Mr. Planning Director, is under commercial zoning is a permitted use, the manufacturing or assembly of garage doors?
Stephen, under commercial buffer use is a, is assembling manufacturing garage doors allowed? What I'm doing, I'm, whatever he asks you exactly is what I'm trying to ask you.
Understood, Mayor Bunch. Again, we're here to focus on the rezon. We're, we're here solely to focus on the rezon. This could be discussed with the applicant at later stages, Mayor Bunch, but at this moment, the staff's main focus was to focus on if this property is appropriate for a rezon from DR eighty-nine to commercial buffer.
Even though the general plan has it. Uh-oh, I saw Sims come on and off.
Yeah, Mrs. Sims, do you have a comment? Well, I just think, I, I have not talked, the, 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 the question is, what is assembling manufacturing? Is it appropriate item to discuss? What I'm hearing, I'm not, I've not looked at this. If the planning department has decided that assembling components is commercial, then I, I, I've not looked at it. I don't know. Have you guys looked at that? I'm talking to the.
Sims, based off previous conversations with the applicant, there was no intention to manufacture the garage doors there. It was solely to store the garage doors there. If anyone needed assistance with replacing the garage door or anything to that capacity, they would load up a truck and then take it.
Okay.
No manufacturing whatsoever. They would take the parts as need be. They would not be assembling the garage door within the facility based off conversations with the applicant, Mr. Sims.
And, and the reason I asked the question, the gentleman at the dais asked, he, he, he did ask the right kind of question at a zoning hearing. And I think the response I just got from the planning department is this is a, this is not assembly. It's, it's commercial.
Yeah, correct. And we do three minutes and you, you were there longer than, she's over here waving and letting me know that you're.
I'm going to wave back. I, I did, I got your comment first and you said you liked to draw maps and give it to people. I brought some tonight. It's, I'll save it for a later date. And it's, with no disrespect to the council, it's disappointing that I got a non, a non-answer out of Planning Director. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sims, would I be in line to re-ask my question of the applicant that just happened to cover this matter that I asked ten minutes ago?
Can he ask that question during public hearing?
Let's, let's close the, well, no. Let's let, let's let, I think the applicant has an opportunity to respond. Let's let all of the constituents speak. Then I think we can ask the applicant to respond to questions that were raised.
That's good. Thank you.
All right. Next.
No additional comments.
No, oh. And I had one and I, and we, you know, since we are going to talk about traffic. This is from gentleman, for crying out loud. Oh. Travis Lemirz, Lemirz. And his comments, he opposes his comments. I am a concerned homeowner who lives in the venture at Black Mountain subdivision. I'm strongly against the rezoning of the two and a half acre parcel from DR eighty-nine to commercial buffer due to increased traffic safety and the general welfare of the citizens of the town of Cave Creek. Access to these retail spaces will bring more traffic coming down Fifty-third Streets. We pay it ends at the entrance to our community. Residents of the community own the streets and we have, have to pay for the repairs of any damage to street curbs, et cetera. We do not have a gate interest in the community with our families. Some of the small children, it will only be dangerous with the added traffic from these businesses coming and trying to turn around in our community and a greater possibility of damaging our streets. Also, there's bus stops in the area for families. And with, and with these added retail businesses, work and delivery trucks and employees coming and going, this will only add to the safety issue. The light at Fifty-third Street does not have a left turn lane or any marked lanes. It is not aligned to match the southern side of Fifty-third across Carefree Highway, which will add more confusion and congestion. Would assume the traffic study would need to be done on Fifty-third Street with turn lanes installed into these new retail spaces. Per the generic, generic site plan submitted by Mr. Vickers, it has the loading dock facing north, which is the same side as the community. Mr. Vickers also has a two-story building and multiple retail spaces when there are currently no two-story building in the immediate area. I would ask tonight that you take into consideration our safety and concern issues that this will have on all of us in the surrounding area. And those were the comments there that some of them are appropriate tonight and some of them may not be. I'm not real sure. All right, so we are now back to council. Just to, Councilman Sova.
I'd like to re-ask, re-address my question to the applicant. I'm of the opinion that an overhead garage door is, has basically three components. Has three or four panels, maybe five. It has rails, side rails in the top, and it has a spring and a rod. Maybe you'll have a garage door opener there. My question that I asked before that I re-ask is that you are going to get the panels already made, shipped to you. Correct? You're not going to manufacture them. You're not going to cut them out. You're not going to press them. You're, you're not going to shape them. You're not going to form them. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are not, and I repeat, not a manufacturing business.
Okay, so you're going to go to a overhead garage door manufacturer and order X number of units in certain sizes and designs and store it there. The rails are standard. Obviously, the springs are different sizes and pounds and.
Yes, sir.
So it's, there will be no manufacturing there. None. Other than perhaps a cup of coffee or something.
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe a grill every once in a while.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand that. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Roy?
What will be your hours of operation?
Currently, my hours of operation are eight to five, Monday through Thursday, and eight to four on Friday.
So you're closed on the weekends?
That is correct.
And what kind of transportation do you have at this facility?
Just standard three-quarter and one-ton trucks.
How many?
I cannot answer that.
Because that's based on business?
It'll be based on business.
He hopes a lot.
Yeah. Just, just would like to rezon the property. That's the intent at this point.
I, I just have another comment to make that that two and a half acres is just about exactly the same size as that parcel that's built on by Meritage to the east. And if that were residential, there could possibly be two, four, six, seven houses in there. And I'm assuming they'd all have two-car garages, and I'll also assume there'd be two cars per lot. So you'd have fourteen, possibly fourteen additional cars in there, perhaps more. But I was going to ask the same question unless you've got, going to have three-quarter ton, half-ton, one-tron, one-ton trucks more than fourteen, which I doubt when you'd start out. So you would have less traffic with this intended use. And it's a shame. I agree. You need all that parking, but it's a requirement and you've satisfied. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It would seem to me in Meritage, correct me, there's thirty-one homes there, okay? There's an awful lot of traffic simply because there's thirty-one homes.
Would we like to make a motion? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just mention one thing that if somebody made a decision that it would be potentially residential that would require a zoning change to commercial buffer. Essentially the same difference. There is one other thing I want to mention. That is the fact that proximate to the parcel with the thirty-one homes on it is something that's in the town of Carefree. I think it's called Lowe's. Now, Lowe's to me is, is a heck of a lot bigger operation probably than what you're talking about. So, you know, it, it's not going to be that big as unusual, a modification to the area as a true heavy-duty, commercial enterprise would be where there is manufacturing, a lot of noise. This is going to be a bunch of people that are taking narrow panels and taking them out to someplace and then putting them together, attaching them to rails and so the people's garage doors actually function. I, I've had this happen to myself. I know what the process is. It, it's expensive. That's what it is. But it's also even pretty quiet when it's done at somebody's home. And I suspect that other than the trucks coming in and out, this is not going to be a particularly noisy operation.
I want to make sure that, you know, since it, the general plan has this as, as commercial buffer. The uses will have to be consistent with the uses under commercial buffer. Very telling in, in our notes here is, is Mr. Lamar, who was a an attorney, who is an attorney, who was at the AG's office, who understands a lot of things. And his statement once again was, the neighbors have a lot of valid questions, concerns, and they will be assured as we go along that those will be resolved with the staff and the commission at the appropriate time. Legally, what we have to consider tonight is, is this request rezoned appropriate under the general plan? That answer is yes for rezoning, and it is. I can find no legal, ethical or responsible way to object rezoning, given that it is consistent with the general plan at this location. We, I believe, set ourselves up for, for trouble if, if we do not, do not approve this. Having said that, I will make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-two-zero-two, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the official town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zone of a parcel totaling approximately two-point-five acres, parcel two-one-one-four-seven-zero-four-three-C from a desert rural residential, prints DR eighty-nine zone to a commercial buffer CB zone.
Second.
All right. We'll try it and see what happens. All those in favor of the motion signify.
You made a motion. Do we have discussion?
Oh, yeah, we can. Go ahead. We don't have to, but we can.
Steve, at some point, a final plat comes back to council for approval. Yes?
It'll be a site plan application, Councilmember Marquinhos, and it, it would come through before council for review. It wouldn't be a plat.
Yeah, and that'll require two public hearings, right?
It'll require to go through.
With the commission.
Planning Commission and.
And one with the council.
And council, that's correct, Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
But that would be an administrative function. Correct, council?
No, we would.
Yes, sir, it would be. But I think where I'm going, I, I truly think the, the discussions like when Councilmember Sova was, was, or me, I forget who it was, contrasting the magnitude of traffic. I, I truly think you're allowed to generically look at traffic to make sure you're adhering to the general plan concept of a buffer. Where the mayor was going, I don't think you could turn this down because you think the traffic study suggests you need a light at a certain intersection. That's, that is the site plan. This is just to say, have you met the general plan? And we're hearing from the, from the commission that you have.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds like it's a seven-zero. We're at the end of the meeting then. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Steve.